Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the first board meeting in our new facility here. What an awesome day. Put it on your calendar. Okay, with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion. We have a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the minutes of the March 2nd, 2022 district board meeting. And the rest are several policies that are internal and administrative. They were in our packet for our review. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Next is public comment, and I'm advised that we have no one wishing to do any public comment today. So thank you. Next is a special announcement. And I'm honored to ask Dee to step to the podium to help us with our special announcement.
Good afternoon, trustees. Dr. Bornstein, we're excited to announce that Ames Community College was recently recognized for two workplace honors. Intergage named Ames as a 2022 Top Workplaces USA winner. And HealthLinks named Ames a Certified Healthy Workplace Leader. These are both national level honors that are based on employee survey responses. The Top Workplaces USA Award celebrates nationally recognized companies that make the world a better place to work by prioritizing a people-centered culture and giving employees a voice. The Top Workplaces USA Award is based entirely on feedback from an employee engagement survey completed by the employees of participating workplaces. Ames has been recognized by HealthLinks as a Certified Healthy Workplace Leader based on our exemplary workplace health and safety culture. This prestigious designation is based on our scores on HealthLinks Healthy Workplace Assessment and an evidence-based questionnaire that evaluated our health and safety efforts. There are four levels within this certification, and Ames has attained the top level leader for the second year in a row. I'd just like to add and say I can't say enough about all of the employees who choose to work at Ames, who work with a goal to make Ames an employer of choice and make Ames a healthy and safe place to work. It is our employees who make Ames excellent. This is their celebration for their commitment to build a strong community of care. Congratulations to everyone.
Oh, my gosh. Well, thank you, Dee, for that awesome announcement. Congratulations to each and every one of the employees here at Ames, as well as the leadership. As a board, I know I speak for all of us, but I'm going to give everybody here the opportunity to say something as well, that we are extremely proud of our employees and our leadership. Congratulations and thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment? Heidi?
I just would like to say congratulations to everyone. Every time I come here, I feel welcomed. I definitely feel safe, and I think everyone works very well together. It's a great atmosphere. So congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Marilyn?
Again, congratulations. It's noted in the culture, and it starts with the employees creating that environment and cabinet and administration. So congratulations.
Thank you, Marilyn. Mark?
We're so fortunate, and it's nice to have everyone all in, thick and thin. Thank you.
Dr. B has clarification.
I could tell Dee's getting nervous. So Dee, do you mind just taking the microphone again? So my comment is more of a question that I think might be helpful. This past year, we did not complete an engagement survey. So when we received the news, it was wonderful news, but quite a surprise. And my question to Dee was, well, how did this happen? Because we didn't complete a survey this year. So, whoops. So could you help us understand? The surveys we've done in the past were sponsored by the Denver Post, and they were Colorado-based, and this is national. But can you also help us understand how we got here? So that we can really understand the comparison? Because I'm sure folks on Zoom and in the audience are saying the same thing, as, well, wait a minute, we didn't do a survey, so how is this possible?
Yes. So the past surveys that we've completed in and received a regional recognition through the Denver Post were completed in 2018, 19, and 21. And so I asked the question, how is it that we are recognized as a USA award winner? And they basically said that our results, based on the 2021 survey, we received some outstanding remarks in two categories: employee well-being and professional development. And so based on those and along with some of our other results, so we have a very high response rate. Their average response rate across all the employers across the country is around 49% and 50%. However, we've surpassed that rate by 58% at our last survey, and we had a 58% engagement rate. So they look at all the employers across the country that participated in these surveys, compare those rates, and then name those winners who are a Top Workplace USA.
Thank you. That's helpful to me, and even makes it that much more special. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that clarification. So again, congratulations. And again, one more time, how about an applause? Okay. Next is the presentation from guests and representatives to the board. I think first is excellence at Ames. Kelly Zielman? Good afternoon.
I have to say that I'm happy to be here in person. I don't know if anyone remembers that two months ago, we did an emergency Zoom, and we were having all kinds of technical difficulties getting to hear our speakers. So I'm delighted to be here in person with you to do this. Today's excellence at Ames speaker took classes here, general ed classes at Ames in 1994, then transferred to UNC to get his bachelor's degree. He is the husband of one, father of two. And what I'm excited for you to hear about is how a few specific things that he learned at Ames all those years ago are a foundation of his work today with youth in the area of mental health and trauma, which we all know has been really on the rise recently. So I am thrilled for you to hear from him and how his education at Ames is still making an impact on what he does and is having a huge impact on youth in our community. So please welcome Jeff Neal.
Well, I have to say, I was feeling good until she said, "all those years ago." So thanks for the introduction. My name is Jeff Neal, and I did attend here all those years ago. And Ames has been an incredible informative piece of my life, from certain things just as small as just across campus, where I learned, when I tried to introduce myself to a young lady, that when you drool down your face and your shirt, you should not engage in an important conversation right after going to the dentist. It'll change your life. So that was one of the things that I remember. But two of the things that have changed my life and formed what I do now has to do with healing and belonging. So I was actually in a volleyball class here, and one of my classmates was deaf. And I really didn't know how to engage with this particular classmate very well while we played volleyball, other than a couple of high fives, until her translator came in to say, hey, we would love for you to learn a few gestures so you can speak to her. Just say hello, how are you? Little things like that. That day totally shaped the way that I feel about people belonging in a group, and it has been something I take with me still. Another one was in my psychology class, where we were talking about mental health in the midst of stress and needing to be able to calm down. And it's actually what I do for a living now, is I help kids find the opportunity to heal and belong through a program we call Rebalance, where we're helping kids balance their emotions as they deal with stressful situations. COVID is simply one of many that kids are already dealing with, and it has exasperated the mental health issues that our community and our world are experiencing. So I handed out these jars, or actually Kelly did, but the amygdala hijack is whenever your brain is so stressed that it takes over. And a term for it is called seeing red. There's a kid underneath here, but if the amygdala hijack has taken over, they can't see clearly enough to make a good decision. The other thing that happens is whenever they see red, that it is all we see about that kid, is that there's red there. So our coaches are trained to help kids learn how to calm themselves down so they can see clearly, but also uncover the fact that there's still a child underneath in the midst of these bad decisions. When we look at them and think, why would you make that choice? Until we begin to understand their history and the reasons that they are seeing red in every situation. So what we do, this calm down technique that I learned in my psychology class, while this was shaken up, and you can grab one of these as you leave if you would like, for an example for yourself, please do, is we have our kids, every week, we take kids through this, where we say, we need you to calm down your toes, your feet, your calves, your quads. We work all the way up the body to say, release all the tension. At that point, take a deep breath, and hopefully you can see clearly enough to make a good decision. One of the things that I've seen this happen with is one of our kids who came to us through the judicial system. So our Rebalance program, we work with Department of Human Services, with the school district, and also we work with the judicial system, CYDC. So this kid had been assigned to us because of his caseworker and because of an assault charge. And he came into our class, and our class is one hour of either music obstacle course, like an American Ninja Warrior course, or skateboarding, that's all done at our facility on 11th Avenue. And we helped to engage this a little bit. We don't want them here. We simply want them engaged with their emotions a little bit, so then they can practice calming down. And this kid had come to us, and he had gotten into this heightened state for a moment. And I pulled him aside, because I was the heart coach, is what we call that, where I'm paying attention to the kids' hearts at that time. And we step aside, and I say, hey, if your emotions touch your actions, you're controlled by your emotions. What I need you to do is separate the two right now and get a calm down technique so that you can be controlled by your thoughts. And he goes, man, if I didn't know on that, I wouldn't have been here. I was like, I'm really stoked you're here. So I guess I'm glad you learned it here. I see that kid every week now. He is 6'5", 250-plus pounds, and 14 years old. He tells me he uses his calm down techniques every day, whenever he is trying to avoid going back into the judicial system. So that is the program that we offer here in Greeley. We're taking 250 kids through the program this year. We've partnered with the UNC Sociology Research Lab to measure our impacts based on the CDC's five areas of focus to help improve mental health. We've gotten our first rounds of results back from Jefferson High School, which is an alternative high school here in town. And I can tell you, the raw data shows that there is every single area that we wanted to make improvement in, we had an 80% plus improvement rate for kids improving their mental health abilities. If you'd like to hear more, I would love to converse with you about this at another time. But the classes I took here are something that has still informed what we do. We actually use that calm down technique because of that class that I took all those years ago. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for being here early. Share your experiences.
Love hearing those stories. Next is representatives to the board. First is Student Government Association, Andrew Caneta.
How about that wind, huh? Wow, good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Dr. B., Chair Oxiker. It's so wonderful to finally be in person with you all today. I think I've presented over Zoom at these board meetings four or five times, I think all of this semester, so it's good to be in person. Of course, my reports are always brief, but I love to share what's been going on with the students here at Ames, and I know that you all love to hear. So today, I'll be talking about some recent events and some upcoming projects that are being led by student leaders. To start, I would like to thank the sale department for allowing, or the sale department and associates, excuse me, for allowing student leaders to attend the annual NASPA conference in Baltimore. This was an amazing professional and personal development opportunity for all of the student leaders, and we all were able to gather extensive amounts of important information and knowledge that we are hoping to develop into plans and actions for future student leaders to continue on, once our team has moved forward and gone from Ames. Many CAP members, including Jeffrey Thatch, who I believe was featured as excellent at Ames a few months ago at one of these board meetings, attended many of the sessions at NASPA that discussed food insecurity. And I remember he shared with me that what he learned from the food insecurity sessions is that Ames is right on point in outperforming hundreds of four-year universities across the country in their efforts for addressing food insecurity. And it was wonderful to see that Ames is being recognized for the amazing work that they do. I know that Arti's pantry has gone through immense expansion in the past years, and it's wonderful to see that that work is being recognized. So that was one of the exciting things that I gathered from the conference and from Jeff Thatch. Additionally, several SGA team members attended sessions covering student mental health and well-being, which is always a concern of the student leaders. We attended mentorship workshops, how to navigate student affairs and student government through a pandemic, which we all have been working on. We attended sessions discussing job predictions for 2022 and higher education relating to Generation Z. And personally, I attended several sessions about civic engagement and free speech on campus. And I think that the NASPA conference was extremely inspirational for all of the student leaders, and we're excited to see what we can do with the information we gathered. So I just wanted to give that shout out to the sale department. Moving forward, I want to talk about some previous events that have taken place, particularly the Josh Blue as-not seen on TV comedy show that was in this very building. I heard some amazing things. I heard that it was packed and that he was hilarious. I've seen his performances on America's Got Talent, and oh, I wish I had been there. It sounded amazing. I know that many of you Board of Trustee members and Dr. B. were present, and I heard from one student that attended that they saw you all laughing and slapping your knees and having a great time, and I was like, that's awesome. I engaged in this conversation for a while, and at the end of it, the student said, it's amazing to see, you know, all of our administrators here at Ames, the Board of Trustees, Dr. B., President of the College, so involved intimately with the students at Ames and being involved in the space. And they said, that's not something that you see at other universities and colleges, and it's special here. The students recognize all of your dedication to Ames, and we appreciate it. We're thankful for it. And that's what I was able to hear from that student after the Josh Blue comedy show. It's a lot of confirmation that we're on the right course as a college, and that our work is paying off and that it's benefiting the students. And that's always encouraging, especially post-pandemic. To continue, I'd like to discuss a few upcoming events, now that we've discussed our previous events, namely Ames Prom, which is coming up next 15th. That's Ames Prom, yes, Ames is having a prom. When I heard that, I wasn't sure if I should be surprised, shocked, or happy. I think I was a mixture of all three. And I'm not good at dancing, but I'm going to be there. So the idea of a prom is often associated with high school students, but our CAP team has been so remarkable at creating inclusive environments at their events. This prom is for everyone that's associated with Ames. If you love to dance, and you like food, and you like partying, it's for you. It's next Friday. It's from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. in the Student Commons Building, and we would love to see you there. Also, the night is, the theme is Night at the Oscars. So it's a black tie event, so dress nicely. Additionally, the outstanding multi-award-winning mentalist and illusionist Wayne Hoffman will be performing at the Fort Leptin Campus from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. tomorrow night. So if you're interested in those types of illusion, brain games, magic, oh, wow, my head hurts now, but it was also fun, events, then that's for you. And Board of Trustee members, Dr. B. and other administrators, if you would like to attend, please contact me at sga预选@ames.edu so that we can reserve seats for you at this event. And then lastly, I want to discuss two SGA projects, Student Gov. Live and the Public Piano Project. Student Gov. Live, as you all know, has released three episodes so far this semester, and it is an outstanding success. It's for students and it's by students, and we're hoping to produce a few more episodes before the semester ends. What's exciting is seeing all of the groundwork being laid for students who are into video and camera and audio to continue this project for future years. And then the Public Piano Project. I have met once with my team of incredible student artists and Felicia Bustow. We brainstormed, and we have another meeting this Friday, and we're hoping to get all the pianos painted and installed on the Greeley campus by the end of this semester. Yes, we are very excited for that. So to conclude, we are endlessly grateful for all of the support that Student Government and CAP has received for all of their events, and Student Gov. Live, and the Public Piano Project. We're working on establishing legacies for future student leaders and for students to follow, just like all of you have established your legacies, through your dedication and your hard work, your brilliance, excuse me, and your love for students here at Ames. Like I mentioned before, the students of Ames recognize all that you do, and we're so, so grateful for all of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that great report, Andrew. We sincerely appreciate it, and the enthusiasm, got it. So with that, we'll take questions. Mark?
I'm sorry, the Student Piano Project, was that a donation project that you went underway with?
Yes, yes, it's the same project that we started back in August.
I have a piano, do you need another?
We have so many pianos, and we're not denying pianos, but we have an overflow. We could fill seven rooms with all of the offers, but all donations are extremely appreciated. So thank you.
Even though you are one.
Any other questions or comments? Heidi?
Yes. I would just like to say, I'm very grateful that you're here in person. So nice to see everyone in person without a mask, and you're doing just a fabulous job. Presentation skills and everything you're doing for the students around here is, you're just doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Anybody else? Okay, well, once again, thank you very much, Andrew. Appreciate it. Nice to have you here. Next is Ames Faculty Association, Mamita. Mamita Roy? There you are. Yes, she is.
Okay. All right, this looks good. Yeah, okay. So first and foremost, everyone is doing a winged joke today, right? So I need to do one too, okay? So first, I love this building. I got to meet Arti. I'm looking at all of your faces without masks. This is a great vibe out here, loving it. But while I was walking from Westview to this building, there was a battle. The battle was between me and the wind. Who won? I did, okay? No, I'm just so happy to be here. Hello, and a very good afternoon to Chairperson Oxiker, members of the board, President B., Dr. Rothmer, other cabinet members, and of course, my colleagues, students, and friends. Now, before I share the accomplishments of my amazing colleagues, I would like to thank Jeff Neal for sharing his inspiring story with us. Two words stuck out to me. One of them is healing, and the other one is belonging. And guess what? That is what we do here at Ames. So it was just a great reminder of our purpose. I should tell you, and I think you know this, I love being here, right? Okay, there are two reasons for it. One, I get to be the cheerleader for my faculty friends. And two, I hear about the amazing things that are going on here at Ames from Andrew, from Jen, and from all of you. So when I leave this meeting, I feel doubly inspired, and I feel that there is a fire, you know, that we need to do more, we need to do better. So I love these meetings. Now, to get to the actual point, why I was here, right? So let's talk about the faculty engagement a little bit, right? We'll start with Denise Pearson. She is the Professor of Advancing Academic Achievement and Education and the FTLC Chair, Dr. Carol Brown. Both of them were speakers at a webinar titled, Learn to Build Community and Spark Engagement for Community College Students. This webinar was live, most of us attended it, but it is also recorded, and it will be shared by the website for National Institute for Staff and Organizational Development. So what a representation for Ames at the national level. In this webinar, they talked about an online discussion platform called Yellow Dig. It is a powerful discussion platform, and they shared that this platform has helped them build a community and spark organic discussions and higher-order thinking in their classes. So you hear about the term learner-centered, right? They talked about learner-led courses. And currently, there are quite a few faculty who are piloting this program in their classes, and many of us have signed up for it for the fall semester. Now, as educators, I think most of you know, it is really difficult to build community in the classroom, especially for online classes. But guess what? This is a perfect solution for that. So I'm excited to try this out in the fall semester with my colleagues. Now, speaking of representation, Michael Booker, Professor of History, and Instructor of Chemistry, Caroline Aikenua, and the Ames Phi Theta Kappa Student Officers, which is our honor society out here. They are going to attend a three-day Catalyst Leadership Convention in Denver this April. It is an engaging and really powerful professional development opportunity for our students. Next up is our incredibly talented Arts and Humanities faculty. We'll start with Benjamin Kessler. He is an adjunct instructor of theater and is the founder of ACT. Does anyone know what ACT is? No? Okay, it's Ames Community Theater Group. And they are having their first production this April. They are playing Almost Mean by John Cariani, and the dates are April 22nd to April 24th. and the dates are April 22nd to April 24th. Another job of mine today is to get your RSVPs for those screens. Hopefully that all of you are going to attend that and cheer our students and support them, right? I plan to attend all three screenings, just letting you know, okay? All right. And, um, after that, and definitely equally important, we'll talk about Charles Luna. Charles Luna is an instructor of art, and currently he is showcasing an exhibition titled Screening, and that's at the Ed BT Building. And if you get a chance, then please visit that building to show, uh, to see this awesome exhibition. It is from March 21st to April 21st. Now, instead of, um, myself trying to tell you a lot about art, let's hear from Charles Luna a little bit. So Charles Luna writes, "During the first two decades of the 21st century, the social assimilation of digital media tools and systems, along with the collective beliefs and behaviors associated with them, have been constant vehicles for cultural transformation. The artwork in this exhibit reframe digital-mediated culture, offering visual opportunities to reconsider the implications of its influence on the human experience. I hope you get a chance to see this powerful statement about our relationship with digital media." Moving on with another awesome art faculty, Kerise Flechner is an instructor of visual arts at the Early College Academy, and she was recently honored during the Encompass Art Celebration at the Harwood Art Center in Albuquerque, New Mexico. She's also currently exhibiting paintings and soft sculpture in a solo art show in an art studio in California this March. I can't help but to revel in the creativity and the recognition they bring to Ames. And speaking of continuous growth, the Faculty Teaching and Learning Center launched a new program in spring that centers on peer observation in a supportive, non-evaluative process called the Teaching Square. The idea of Teaching Square is to get faculty together in a group, ideally four of us, and we would observe each other's courses, reflect on that observation, share strategies. I loved it. So as you can see, that there are four participants who are piloting this program. We'll start with Elizabeth Durans, Instructor of Health Science, then Emma Murray, Instructor of Biology, Jennifer Markovitz, Instructor of Business Technology, and, you know, Mamita Roy. We love that program. And here is the secret, okay? So the program ended this April. But guess what? We will meet as a cohort to continue to discuss teaching strategies throughout the rest of our career here at Ames. So that is what I got from this program. And finally, and this is a serious yet very important work that one of our instructors does, April McClure. She is the Professor of Speech and Communication. She volunteers at CASA. CASA is, quote, "appointed special advocate for children." It is a national organization that helps youth and children to successfully come out of an abusive situation or a situation of neglect. And it gives me so much peace of mind and joy to know that April is in their corner. That brings me to the end of this report. If you have any questions for me, I would love to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mamita. Any questions? Comments? No? Okay. Mamita, I just, uh, the last one, you hit on CASA. I have a good friend that has participated in CASA over the years, and it's absolutely incredible, the, um, the difference that she has made in so many young people's lives. So, um, it's good to hear about the involvement with that, so. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. And last, but certainly not least, for Ames Staff Association, Jen Sidor. Welcome, Jen. Jen, welcome back.
It's always fun to play, guess how tall the next person will be? With the microphone. Okay, I think this will work. Let me know. Good afternoon, Chair Oxiger, members of the Board, and Dr. B. It's so wonderful to be here with you and to see everybody's full faces and to be in this wonderful building. It still has the new building smell, like the new car smell, right? So nice to be here. I don't know. My only comment on the wind to follow up my, my colleagues is that I, um, made the unwise decision of putting on lip gloss on my way. So not only was it counterproductive, but now it's in my hair, so don't make that mistake. So today, I have a couple of staff accomplishments that, um, I'm excited to share with you. Uh, first up is Kim Joyner. She's an admissions counselor in recruiting and enrollment management. Kim says, "I was recently elected president-elect of the Colorado Council on High School and College Relations." The Colorado Council on High School and College Relations is a volunteer member organization comprised of Colorado high school counselors and college admissions staff who work together to help educate and assist students in achieving their higher educational goals. My role not only allows me to represent Ames at the state level, but it gives me an opportunity to serve students throughout Colorado. Congratulations to Kim. Um, the second one, I, I feel like it could have been a ripple, um, in recognition, but it was submitted as an accomplishment, so I'm sticking it in between because I think it can fit into both. Um, Sophia Campbell, who is a part-time staff member for Library Services in Fort Lepton, um, is recognizing College for Kids Program Coordinator Katie Jacobs for her, for Katie's efforts to promote and increase attendance at College for Kids. Sophia works for the town of Hudson in addition to Ames, and between her and Katie, they've worked together to reach out to surrounding communities near Fort Lepton for scholarship opportunities to help kids attend College for Kids. Sophia writes, "We are now two and a half months from the start of College for Kids in Fort Lepton, and Hudson is offering 15 scholarships, Keansburg is offering 15 scholarships, Weld RE3J School District is providing transportation for our resident kids, and postcards in both English and Spanish with our scholarship information have gone out to several schools for age-appropriate kids. This partnership between Ames, RE3J, Hudson, and Keensburg is growing rapidly, and it would not have been possible without Katie's dedication and passion for her programs." Um, I know Sophia was recognizing Katie, but to me, it sounds like it's an effort on both their parts. So congratulations to both of these women, um, for their efforts to continue Ames' reach out into the communities in the K-12 arena and to future students. And finally, I'd like to highlight a ripple in recognition for you. And today is a nomination for Rosa Galindo. She's an admissions counselor. She was nominated by Christine Wedeman and Laura Killenwing, who are both early childhood faculty. We are nominating Rosa Galindo for her recruiting work at the United Way of Weld County Building Blocks Conference on February 19th, 2022. First of all, it was a Saturday event that we asked her to join us at 7:30 a.m. Rosa came to the Doubletree Hotel in downtown Greeley and set up a table for Ames for the participants who attended this conference. She carefully chose items that teachers would enjoy receiving. As the door to the ballroom was opened, there was Rosa at her vendor table smiling. The tablecloth and runner displayed Ames nicely. She kept up with the ones who came and visited with her while sharing about Ames from different perspectives as the questions were asked. We appreciated her professionalism. After she left at 1:00, we had people come and ask us about her. That showed the impact that she had created. Rosa, thank you from the Early Childhood Education Department, the Theater Department, and the Physical Education Department. I wanted to highlight this for you today because I wanted to note the value and the importance of the relationship between staff and faculty and the support that we provide to one another. And because of this collaboration, Rosa and the faculty members were also able to continue the positive impact and impression that Ames has in our community. All around, it was a team effort. And that's all that I have for you today. I'll take any questions.
Any questions of Jen? Wow. Go ahead, Heidi.
Jen, I, I, maybe I'll just contact you later. I'd like to find out, um, a little bit more for the College for Kids.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Well done. Thank you.
Uh, Jen, thank you very much. Um, I got a question for you. Are you going to join us next month?
Next month?
Uh-huh.
Yes, I am.
You are?
I am. I will be here.
Um, I'm glad to hear that. So it's, yeah, it's an absolute pleasure, uh, having you here for this report, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, action items. Okay, first action item, A, Compensation Proposal Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023. And Dee Schultz, I see you're up there, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Thank you. Um, I'm not even going to follow those winged comments. I'm just going to go right into business here. I'm here to present Action Item 8A, uh, the Compensation Proposal for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. The current pay matrix and benchmark structure for staff and administrative positions were established in 2005. Since 2005, incremental increases have been made to the pay matrix benchmarks, and new positions have been added to the structure with individualized market assessments. In 2019, we completed, uh, a global compensation review, and the purpose of this review was to align the staff salary matrix structure and reestablish the administrator benchmarks to the current market, allowing Ames to be highly competitive in our recruiting efforts. Reestablish internal equity among the various classifications and minimize current and potential compression with new hires within similar classifications. In 2006, Board Minutes indicated trustee support to reach the 75th percentile for full-time faculty pay. In 2017 and 18, this goal was met and has been maintained since then. Best practice is to reassess the market every three to five years and apply modifications to the current base pay and matrix. So based on this, the administration is recommending a three-step, step approach to the, for fiscal year 2022-2023. Step one is an annual base and matrix increase of 4% for full and part-time faculty, full and part-time staff, including student employees and administrators. This step will begin to address the market analysis recommendation and maintain full-time faculty percentile. Step two will finalize, will be the final, finalized matrix adjustments due to market analysis for 55% of full-time staff and an estimated 5% of part-time staff. Step three is an adjustment for full-time faculty to address compression due to change to education and work experience increments for new hire placements. Therefore, the fiscal impact for this is 2.9 million, and the administrative recommendation is, is a motion to approve steps one, two, and three for fiscal year 2022-2023 due to the results of the, of the compensation review.
Thank you, Dee. Uh, are there any questions of Dee? Do I have a motion? Is your mic on, Mark? I saw move Action Item 8A. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Compensation Proposal Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023, Action Item 8A. All in favor, please signify by. Oh, I'm sorry. How about a discussion? Any, any discussion?
I think we had that last month.
Yeah, we did. We, is there any more? Did you get a chance to talk some more?
You want to talk some more?
Well, I just want to comment. I, I appreciate all we do uh, to meet the Board's commitment to keep the salaries where they need to be to properly reward, um, all of our staff and our employees. So, um, I commend this, uh, this action, so I'll be supporting it.
Okay, one, one more thought. I, you know, not only
See, we knew.
I couldn't resist. I gave you the opportunity. But long and short, what's neat about this is we also didn't have to lay anybody off through COVID.
Yes.
Which, that's a raise in itself. I mean, everybody kept a job, kept their benefits. Um, you know, and I was very fortunate to have the same experience in my company, so. It's, you know, we have that strength, which is important, and to do these type of things is additionally important. So thank you for everybody all around. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'll ask the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side? That motion carries. Thank you, Dee. And you're still on, Dee, with health and dental insurance benefits.
Yes, uh, presenting Action Item 8B. Ames participates in the Comprehensive Health and Benefits Plan, which covers medical, dental, vision, long-term disability, and basic AD and D and life insurance. Developed and managed by the State Board of Community Colleges and Occupational Education, Ames is a member of the Benefits Advisory Committee, whi- which meets monthly to review claims experience, adjust plan coverages, annually receive provider service and rate proposals, and take action on, on how earnings from the SBCCOE Benefits Trust established in 1983 be applied to buy down future premium costs for participating colleges and their employees. Current medical benefits include plan options provided by Anthem and Kaiser. Dental benefits include plan options provided by Dental. For fiscal year 2022-2023, there will be no plan changes for medical and dental benefits. Premiums for medical benefits will see an average of 4% for Anthem, a 4% increase for Anthem, and an increase of 3% for Kaiser. Currently, Ames provides 100% coverage for employees only tier, employee-only tier, and 85% coverage for plus, children, spouse, and family coverage. Open enrollment for employees begins in April. Therefore, approval of comprehensive health and benefit plan payments is timely. Therefore, the administrative recommendation is a motion to maintain coverage for employee-only tier at 100% and coverage for plus, children, spouse, and family tiers at 85% for fiscal year 2022-2023.
Thank you, Dee. Any questions of Dee? Okay, uh, do I have a motion? For the, to approve Action Item 8B?
I move to approve Action Item 8B. My second thought?
We have a motion and a second to approve Action Item 8B. Any discussion? Heidi?
Not a discussion, but a comment. It just shows that Ames is dedicated, um, to continue to keep their employees and also to bring in new employees, um, to offer this type of benefits. It's, it's a really, I mean, it's a kind thing and well-deserved for everyone, so thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Any other comments? Okay, I'll ask the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Dee. Thank you all for your continued support.
Absolutely. Next, Jerry Harvey, Board Liaison for Distinguished Fellow Award.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger and Board. The Distinguished Fellow Committee met on March 4th, uh, chaired by trustee O'Hara, who's, um, absent today, um, so I'm presenting instead. Um, they meant to discuss the nomination and recommendation for, uh, the recipient of this year's Distinguished Fellow Award. Uh, the committee unanimously recommends that Dr. Ray Peterson be the 2022 Distinguished Fellow. be the 2022 Distinguished Fellow for his outstanding commitment and service to Ames Community College, and the committee asks that the board approve that. Thank you, and I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you, Jerry, and thank you for standing in for trustee O'Hara. Any questions of Jerry? Okay, well, who would like the honor?
I'd love--
I turn on, I talk on. You know, thank you. Ray's been a great statement for this college over the last eight-year tenure and just his whole educational career. I mean, this man is noteworthy and then some. He is the soul of the earth. He is one cowboy that I'm very proud of, met and known, and he welcomed me onto the board, myself and Lyle, with comfortable arms and said, "Have a seat here. It's going to take about six months to get into the groove, and then you're on your way." But he is definitely an asset that-- I am so grateful that he joined the Foundation Committee and the Foundation Board. So he's not going to walk away just yet. So I would nominate Dr. Ray Peterson for Distinguished Fellow in action item 8C.
I would say a second.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. We have a motion and a second to award Distinguished Fellow Award to Dr. Ray Peterson. Any further discussion? I just want to echo what Mark has said. Dr. Peterson was-- he loved us at this college and with a real passion. He was sincere in everything he did. I loved his sage advice. He was always good for a little bit of information to help you make a decision or to help you get through something tough or something like that. But he was always good for a laugh, too. You know, we've spent a lot of time here sitting over the past six years for me, going on seven, laughing at Ray's comments and enjoying his sense of humor. He was definitely an asset, so I'll be definitely supporting this. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say I have the pleasure of being on the board with him for two years. But what I didn't realize is he was in my life when I was nine years old without realizing he was friends with my parents. And so we had some good stories to tell about Wyoming and so forth. And it's just, and I've had coffee with him one or two times to ask him about his history and education. And he's, he's gold. I'm glad he was here with everyone, so I'm glad to be nominated.
All right, any other? All right, hearing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor of action item 8C? Make sure I get this right. Yeah, 8C. All votes? Thank you. And Jerry, I assume you'll take it from here? Okay, appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Action item 8D, Emeritus Status Request for James Crandall, Dr. Rothmar.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger, members of the Board. Mr. Crandall, would you come and join me, please? His favorite part.
Oh, yeah.
So nice to be able to do this, actually in person, to have our Emeritus people here with us as opposed to the Zoom screen. So as you know, this is probably one of my favorite roles and responsibilities that I have, and it's a distinct pleasure because I've been able to work with Jim pretty closely in the three and a half years I've been here on various committees. And I want to share with you a few of the items that were in his support letter from his dean that we all met with earlier in the work session, Ellen Sweeter. And certainly, what I'm sharing is only a small sample of all of your accomplishments and things that you've contributed to Ames. So just a brief background. Professor Crandall has served Ames Community College for 35 years as a faculty member and department chair of Communication Media. Over this timeframe, he started as a student and a work-study student. He has grown the Communication Media Program and helped to grow our radio broadcasting program. And just a couple of the items from his support packet I wanted to share. One of the things that he did was procure the very first Ames Media Band, which was a donation, and subsequently led the college in the purchase of a more robust band with much more-- functional. And so thank you for that. And also, one of the accomplishments was he moved our student radio station, and you'll have, and this gives you a general sense of the power, of from a 0.5-watt station that reached the parking lot to an internet and app-driven station that covers the world. And just a couple of examples, he helped coordinate several simulcasts with a student station in Britain, and he also oversaw several award-winning radio shows. So based on Professor Crandall's exemplary service and accomplishments, our administrative recommendation is approval of Emeritus Status.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Dr. Rothmar. Any questions of Dr. Rothmar? None? Do I have a motion to approve Emeritus Status for James Crandall?
I motion to approve action item number 8D.
We have a motion?
Second motion?
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll ask the question. All in favor of approving action item 8D, Emeritus Status for James Crandall, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side? That motion carries. Congratulations, sir, and thank you. Actually, we appreciate all you've done for Ames Community College. Thank you. Okay, next, action item 8E, Emeritus Status Request for Donna Norwood, Dr. Rothmar.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. Donna, would you join me as well, please? So we have another short-time employee to talk a little bit about. So Professor Norwood has served Ames Community College for three years as a part-time faculty member, and then another 32 years as a full-time employee, which equates to 35 uninterrupted years of service and commitment to the college and our students. So 15 of those years were as a faculty member and 20 years as an administrator. So certainly with both of those, one of the-- a few of the items, again, from her extensive nomination packet I'd like to share with you from the director of the Public Safety Institute, Randy Southard, a lot of things he shared. Donna won the Faculty of the Year Award in 1996, received numerous Ripples Awards. You know, we've talked about the Ripples in this meeting a lot, and Donna has certainly received a fair number of them, in particular from her students. And I just want to share it, complimenting her, both not only in her quality of teaching, but for her genuine care and respect and treatment of our students. So as we've talked about that belonging and feeling of belonging to Ames, here's clearly an example of it happening over a long period of time for someone who absolutely cares and brings so much of herself to our college and to our students. She's also served on many state and national speaker events and at local fire agencies as well as professional development seminars. So based on Professor Norwood's performance, both in her role as a faculty member and an administrator that has been exemplary, we request their administrative recommendation is the approval of the Emeritus Status.
Thank you, Russ. Any questions of Russ? Okay, do I have a motion to-- a motion to approve Emeritus Status for Donna Norwood?
Sure, I motion that we approve action item number 8E for Donna Norwood. Second, the motion.
We have a motion, thank you, Mary. We have a motion and a second to approve Emeritus Status for Donna Norwood. Any further discussion? Mark?
Excuse me, Donna's-- familiar face, but it's always a pleasant smile at every board meeting, as I remember onboarding. And it's nice to see you again, and I'm so proud that you have been well-deserved in this award for many years prior to today. Thank you.
Dr. B?
So one of the list of accomplishments there, too, is actually, prior to my arrival and the first year of my arrival, Donna stepped in when the college really needed the chief academic officer and stepped in voluntarily and really kept the college moving forward and certainly helped onboard me. So thank you, Donna, for everything, and that just also shows the commitment that you have to the institution and the love that you've given for the past 35 years. So thank you so much.
Well, I've known Donna for a while, a long while. It's an absolute pleasure to see you here for this award, Donna. I have worked with many of her students, heard all of the great things that Donna has done for Ames and all the things more than that that she has done for individual students. Everyone always has spoken highly of you, and you've just been a huge asset for Ames and for the community and all of the students that you've had over the many years. So thank you for all that, and congratulations on this award, which I assume you will very shortly have. Thank you, Donna. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor of Emeritus Status for Donna Norwood, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Next is action item 8F, Emeritus Status Request for Dr. Richard Hanks.
We are in good company, aren't we? These are Meritite nominations. This is fun. I have the distinct pleasure of sharing Emeritus nominations for two incredible employees with whom I didn't begin at the college, but with whom I get to share the end of the journey. So we're going to call up Dr. Hanks to join me. I'm pleased to put forward action item 8F, Emeritus Status for Dr. Richard Hanks, who currently serves as the Director of Counseling and Care. He's served at the college in various roles, as many of us know, for the past 21 years, including, like Donna, as faculty and administrator in both academic and the Stace Division. He ended with the right division, I'm just saying. His influence has been far-reaching for both instructional and staff ranks through the years, by my count. He's contributed his expertise and energies on at least 15 interdisciplinary committees and task forces, many of which established momentum for current services and initiatives. He's worked to build, most recently, several community partnerships, including with Love County Human Services, which has very much helped us maximize student supports, especially through this pandemic, to meet their basic needs. And his service to the community has included, in fact, serving on the Board of Directors for Envision, a passion point for Richard, creative support for people with developmental disabilities. But I have to say, by far, one of his largest and most far-reaching, far-impacting projects throughout his tenure at the college has been the establishment of counseling services for all campuses more than a decade ago. Can you believe it's been that long? Time flies. Years later, years later, we have a dedicated, full-time clinical staff, a growing counseling department, and a growing need, right? And because of Dr. Hanks' work, countless students have benefited from counseling and crisis services. This intern has supported students, given them the tools to stay in college, thereby increasing our retention and success rates and their trajectories. This man has a heart that listens to everybody who walks through that door. So I am so grateful to be here during Dr. Hanks, during Richard's swan song at Ames that he chose to work in our unit is such an honor to me. And so I support the administrative recommendation to approve Emeritus Status for this young man. I do.
Thank you very much, Shannon. Any questions of Shannon? Okay, well, do I have a motion to approve Emeritus Status for Dr. Richard Hanks?
I would make a motion to approve Dr. Richard Hanks' Emeritus Status. Having, we've raised our kids together, and we've known each other for 35, 40 years almost. And certainly, I appreciate all that he's done for Ames and our community, too, because what reaches Ames reaches the community.
Okay.
For action item 8F.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, we have a very definite motion for Dr. Richard Hanks. Okay, and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same side? Motion carry.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you very much.
This is just a fun time.
Last, but certainly not least, I'm pleased to have Stuart Thomas join me to put forward action item 8G. We're in good company, friends. Emeritus Status for Stuart, who has employed at the college for more than 30 years. He's just about gotcha, Donna. Stuart quietly retired from the college in January of 2018 without fanfare and without the recognition that his service to the college deserved. Since his return as a member of the student COVID team, he's again shown his incredible value to the college and to student service and to me as a professional. It's my belief that we cannot let Stuart leave the college again without the recognition that he so greatly deserves. He began his employment at Ames in the spring of 1988. Who was here back then? Okay, Donna and Randy back there. As a work-study, Stuart, in the summer of 88, he took a entry-level position in admissions and records and served in several different positions until he became the registrar in 2003, the position from which he retired in 2018, four years ago. Some of his largest and most far-reaching, far-impacting projects throughout his tenure at the college are still happening, and they're still in practice today. Banner, remember that fun? Still having it. Degree Works, parchment, tuition classification. There's a lot more, but that's just a few. Many sitting in this room can attest to the fact that for years, Stuart was the subject matter expert on all things banner. In fact, that expertise came in really handy when in October of 2020, my office was drowning in COVID student reports and quarantines. And when we were brainstorming about possible retirees to invite into the work, Stuart's name surfaced quickly. In the 30-plus years he worked at Ames, his legacy was one of hard work, dedication, and a passion for serving students coupled with deep expertise and knowledge of whatever this man wanted to undertake. Knowing what we knew about Stuart, we believed the COVID work would be no different. And he didn't know a lot about COVID, but we knew he would become the expert. And we were right. He quickly became the expert on our team, reading countless articles, guidance, and research in order to fully understand all that he could about all things COVID. This man has touched about every line on our COVID spreadsheet, which today totals 3,100, and that equals at least three reachouts to every student in that 3,100. So we have probably talked to students 9,000 or 10,000 times. Stuart has probably been 8,000 of those, in the sense of providing us direction and helping us through it. And I'm almost, I'm almost drawn to tears when I think about this man's work through the last couple of years. Some of us might not have made it through the work had it not been for him standing right next to us. And so the members of our COVID team who are online and who are in the house today also support this story. It's mine and the team's honor to support the administrative recommendation to approve Emeritus Status for you. Your work has touched every nook and cranny of this institution throughout the last three decades, and we are better because of your legacy. With that, I just want you to vote.
We'll do that, just for you. Thank you, Shannon. Any questions of Shannon? Okay, do we have a motion to approve Emeritus Status for Stuart Thomas?
I motion that we approve action item 8G for Emeritus Status for Stuart Thomas.
Do I have a motion?
Second the emotion.
Do we have a second? To approve emeritus status for Stuart Thomas. Any further discussion? Oh, I just want to say thank you. Thank you very, very much for doing what you've done and for taking on what sounds like an absolute monumental job, and being incredibly successful, and helping the students and everyone else here at Ames, so thank you. Okay. Well, there's no other discussion, we'll ask the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Anymore? That was fun. Okay. Good job. Thank you very much. What an honor to be able to recognize these incredible people for the service they provide Ames Community College. Next on the agenda, item nine, information item. First off is the calendar. Jerry?
Thank you Chair Oxiger. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to go through the calendar of upcoming events, quite a few good events coming up, and wanted to run through those with you. First, I was going to run through some of the Celebration Week events that are coming up that we have RSVPs for already, just to confirm with everybody that you're still good to go there. So the first event is going to be the Trio Graduation on April the thirtieth, from ten thirty to twelve thirty, and right now we have trustee Wendell and Chair Oxiger as attending, and then we've got trustee Shock as tentative as well. Oh, yep, Aaron. Eleven to one, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Aaron. So, time change there, eleven to one. All right. Next.
I have it on my calendar too.
Perfect. I've got you down, thank you, trustee Hoult. Next is the graduation reception on May the sixth, from five PM to seven PM, and we have all trustees attending that. Next is the veteran coining on May the ninth, at six PM, and we have Chair Oxiger and trustee Shock in attendance at that event. Next, we've got the president's reception, May tenth, four PM, and we have trustees Shock, Wendell, and actually it looks like we have all, so we have all trustees attending that event. The honors ceremony on May the twelfth, and we have trustee Shock and Chair Oxiger and trustee Wendell in attendance there. And for the nurse penning later that day on May the twelfth, we have trustees Shock, O'Hara, and Hoult, and then Chair Oxiger as well. And we have some events that we didn't get RSVPs for last time, so the first one is going to be the Police Academy graduation on May the fourteenth, that is, that Saturday, and that is at one PM for the police graduation, and then earlier that day, we have the Fire Academy graduation, again, May fourteenth, at eleven AM. We don't have to get RSVPs right now, but if you know you can make it, you can let me know, otherwise you can let me know after.
I'll try both, I'm gonna vote.
Okay, I'll get you down for both. Right, and then the last event is going to be the Early College Academy graduation on May the twentieth, at two PM, and that'll be here at the Welcome Center, and again, we don't have to get RSVPs right now, I'll be reaching out again later this week for confirmation, just wanted to get those in front of you. Yeah. Yes, yeah, the only other event will be commencement, and that one will be on May the thirteenth, the two ceremonies, twelve PM and five PM, and we have all trustees RSVPing except for trustee Wendell. And that concludes the calendar.
Okay, thank you for that, Jerry. Next is the ACCT National Leadership Congress. Back to you, Jerry.
Yep, me again. So this year's conference is going to be October twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth in New York City. I'd reached out a couple, three weeks ago in a board update, just giving some preliminary information, so this is just a reminder about that, and that we need to know by April the eighteenth, if you plan on attending, that way we can go through with the hotel reservations and moving forward with that process. So, again, not something we have to do RSVPs for now, but I'll be reaching out again later.
I'd like to attend.
Okay. Perfect, I'll get you down for that.
And that's October twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth?
Yes. Yep. And I'll be reaching out later this week to the board with more information as well.
Okay. You may speak.
Trustee Shock, just, am I on?
There, there, there.
Just for your information, so when you were onboarding, we were mentioning that there's one conference typically in the fall, sponsored by the Community College Trustee Organ, the National Community College Trustee Organization, this is what Jerry's referring to. This is, if you choose to attend, your registration, travel expenses are covered by the college, and it's an excellent opportunity to network with other trustees across the country, and it's traditionally like a regular conference, there's breakout sessions, keynote speakers, et cetera, so just for more information for your consideration.
Okay. Anything else on that, Jerry?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is the draft board professional development schedule that you found in your packet. We talked about this briefly at our last retreat, and we've got the subjects that we have discussed, listed here, the talk about getting items on the agenda, how does the board speak with one voice, the trustee role within the community, productive communication and conflict resolution, code of conduct development, parliamentary procedure, and executive session guardrails. So we've come up with a tentative schedule for these topics. Getting items on the agenda suggested for May eleventh, board meeting, or a future board meeting. So I'm just going to address these one at a time and see if we have any discussion on this. If you have any conflicts with these dates, let me know. We just need to know so that we can, as we get there, we can get them on the agenda. So, getting, speaking of getting items on the agenda, how about the first one? Getting items on the agenda for May eleventh, the board meeting. Oh, just, is that acceptable to everybody? We just, we just need consensus here and to see if you're all right discussing this at that meeting.
I think I would be fine.
Do you see any issues with doing that? Any problems? Yeah, just discuss the topic. No. At the board meeting, just like we're doing here.
Just to talk about it, just, no action on this stuff.
No?
Sure.
Okay. Next would be board speaking with one voice, and the next one, trustee role within the community, we're suggesting we talk about those two topics at the June twenty-first, twenty-second board retreat. Okay with that? Marilyn?
I'm fine with it. I, these are a couple of topics that we did talk, discuss in moving forward in our last retreat, so I think unless something's changed, those are, those are items that I think kind of floated to the top.
Okay. Next is the productive communication and conflict resolution, that's also suggested at the June twenty-first, twenty-second board retreat. Okay, then, doing that then? Okay. Next is code of conduct policy and procedure development, June twenty-first and twenty-second board retreat. Okay? And we're going to discuss that, and we're going to get started on that today, just, but I'll get into that when we get there. Okay? And then next is parliamentary procedure, just some five-minute refreshers of pertinent pieces and parliamentary procedure during the August to December twenty-two board meetings. So, this just suggested that we do some five-minute refreshers, and I'm not sure how we're going to do that yet, and what format that'll take, but I think it's important that we get that introduced into some board meetings to just do some refreshers, if everyone's okay with doing that. Marilyn?
I'm fine with it. Thank you, Jerry, for getting the kind of Robert's rules as well, to help us with running efficient meetings, so appreciate it. I'm all for it.
Okay. Good, thank you very much. And then the executive session guardrails, throw that out there for February twenty-twenty-three board meeting in the information section item, just like we're doing here today, just a manual refresher, just guardrails, meaning just refresher on how to stay in our lanes as board members. You okay with that? Okay, thank you very much. All right. Anything else that you think we need on that, Jerry? Dr. B?
No, I think that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay. That'll help us get, get these things on the agenda as we get there. Okay, next is the draft board code of conduct. First of all, I want to thank trustee Hoult for meeting with me on this. I'm not too sure we got too far, but we certainly got a good start on this. This was difficult. The marching instructions we got from the board at the last retreat was to start with the twenty truths of trustee behavior that we had in our packet, thank you. Twenty truths for effective trusteeship. So trustee Hoult and I got together and started talking about this, we were somewhat limited on time, in fact, we ran out of time, but one of the challenges we, we came across right away was finding that some of these crossed over into the ethics, and we didn't want to be real repetitive, but some of these are important enough that we thought, at least, in some context, maybe they get mentioned again anyway, so we tried to sort that out. So, thank you for that assistance, Mark, and we came up with kind of a redline version, we sent that on to Jerry with some notes, and he developed that, and then as we were developing, Dr. Bornstein, Jerry and I were developing the agenda for today, we kind of went through it and just reviewed it, and maybe there was a couple of places where we had missed some wording, or we felt that maybe some words needed or objected, so, but the bottom line is, we came up with a draft, a redline draft that's in your packet, so you've had the opportunity to look at that, and you can certainly have more time to look at that, but I asked Jen Neal, the attorney that has worked with us, worked with us at the last retreat, to sit in with us today, Jen's here, so I thought we'd start with some discussion on that. First of all, just a broad overview, see if anybody has any real questions that really jumped out and grabbed you, that really, that were really alerted you, and see if you wanted to discuss anything in particular, and then Jen is here to advise us on, and help us answer any questions we might have as to some of these codes of conduct. It's going to be a very important document as we move forward and as we move toward adopting it, and we just agreed that we would talk about this at our next retreat, so we'll see more of it then, but the hope is that we can adopt it shortly after that, so we have plenty of chances to look at this and to discuss it. We want it to be a legitimate, meaningful document when we're done, so I will just start it off, first of all, Jen, you had a chance to look at it, do you have any comments initially?
Yeah, my initial, my initial comments are that this does a really good job. I like to view these as kind of a summary as to how we're going to conduct ourselves, and taking into consideration all of the other framework that's already put in place for you, and I think this is a really good start at that. I think there's a couple nuances in regards to your other policies that we should pull in a little more into the code of conduct, just so that everyone is on the same page from a behavioral standpoint. In particular, there's around the board ensures number three on the list, the board ensures all board members follow board policies and intervene when necessary. I do believe that needs to be just a little bit broader, because not only the policies obviously are designed by you and the college, but as you know from the retreat, there are some rules, regulations, and processes that also need to be followed, and so I think that should be brought in to incorporate those as well. The only other thing that I was questioning a little bit is number, let me get to the right number, number twelve? I wasn't really sure, the board member shall refrain from caucusing. I'm not sure that one, just from a phrasing perspective, is appropriate in here, and wanted to make sure I understood sort of where that came from.
Let me, what we got with the twenty truths, at the end of our retreat, someone had suggested that we include no caucusing and no surprises, and I don't know that Mark and I knew exactly what that meant, or who said that.
I don't remember seeing that initially. Excuse me, I don't remember seeing that initially, and it's kind of like, I remember your conversation about communication, and you know, you have to stay within the lane to some extent, but you can't serial communicate and do these type of things, but at the same time, if I'm trying to figure out how Marilyn's wrapping her head around the subject, so I can maybe better understand it, or Jean, or Lyle, or what have you, to sit there and not communicate at all is not going to be productive for fair decision-making, you know, because as elected officials, we have constituents we have to consider, and it's so important that we, we ground ourselves in that, in that school of thought and be proactive, and we can have, if we don't have an opinion ourselves, we probably should seek one, and it might not be, it might be the third person you talk to before, oh, that makes sense now to me, so caucusing, you know, it happens in our Congress, it happens in every other elected official's life, there's, there's groups that form coalitions and they quote-unquote caucus around this school of thought. You know, we, we share a lot of common goals, but there are some that are more specific possibly with one trustee to the other, and in this type of discussion, you can bring all those issues out in an open session format where everybody is hearing and listening, and it's televised, and all of the above, and that's healthy. I think that's very healthy, and you actually, sometimes it gets into the nitty-gritty, so you want to have codes of conduct that say, well, you can't say that now, or you can't do that, and you put guardrails on things, you know, you just want to make sure, you know, put the guardrails on after all the cars have left the track, if that makes sense. We have nineteen ethic rules, as well as a state statute to follow. Now, we're, we're working on twenty code of ethic rules, and you know, that's a lot to memorize, and we're not going to memorize it all. We're going to have Jerry there, he's going to help us out. And I think that's important, so we have to be practical. What's, what's practical? If you, if you have a board that's not in agreement, you, I guess you use guardrails and codes of conduct to keep it in play in the right direction, that benefits all concerned, and that would be, that might be a little bit off-subject of where we've gone with this particular one on caucusing. that might be a little bit off subject to where we've gone with this particular one on caucusing. But if we can't communicate with one, Lyle and I have talked and talked maybe what? Twice in the last one-on-one last three years. That's not healthy. That's not healthy. I think board members should be able to communicate one another, but they shouldn't be sitting there, I need your vote on this issue. I just want to understand why you're thinking that way in this issue. And is that okay to say that?
If you don't mind me jumping in. So at the retreat, the no caucusing, no surprises was on the, you know, on the brainstorm butcher block list. And that point, Mark, that you just made is exactly why it was tied to the open meeting law and not serial caucusing, not discussing Ames business outside of a public meeting to create serial understanding or pre pre-direction of an action or a step or a direction. So that's what we were discussing at the retreat and that's where that no caucusing came from. So maybe to your point, it's the language is not appropriate, but we probably need to say something that gets to what you were just mentioning about the serial directional flow of a action or something that shouldn't be happening outside of a public meeting.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. I I think we have to have the confidence in another, in one another that if we if we sit and visit about something that we are not being part of a serial meeting, we have to have the confidence in one another. And that's part of why I think I was interested in developing this code of conduct so that we have something to reference it back to so that we can remind each other to as to what those codes of conduct are, as to what is acceptable behavior and what is unacceptable behavior. Because I don't want to be a part of something that I shouldn't be a part of. So that's, I think, why we're working on this. So we're all in, we're all will be developing and holding ourselves to a code of conduct that we're all become familiar with. If that makes sense.
Yeah. And I just want to address, so from what everyone just said. So to your point, Mark, from our prior conversations, there is nothing, and I want to make it very clear, the goal is that you do communicate. That is your jobs. As the board of trustees, you need to communicate. You need to educate yourselves. You need to educate one another. And you need to make very informed decisions associated for the best interest of the college as a whole. And you need to speak as one voice. That is the key. So there is not a problem in having that communication. The problem is whether or not you're doing it in a way that is adversarial to the policies, procedures and process that you put in place for the board to act in a specified way. So this code of conduct, in particular, bringing it back to the caucusing. My only concern around the phrasing of this, of the caucusing, is that that is typically viewed as more of a political, electoral legislative type process. I don't believe that's appropriate here. What you are doing as a board is not that process. And so therefore you should not be caucusing, but I also don't believe that it is appropriate in this form. So my recommendation would be actually to take that phrasing out of this code of conduct because it doesn't really apply to your roles as board of trustees. I think there are other things within this code of conduct, the code of ethics and your communication policies that already address that type of activity.
Does that help?
Go ahead. Yeah. We'll have more discussion on it, but that's that's what it's about.
Yeah, yeah. There is one at the end of this. Jen, you and I, oh, here it is. Board members. Board members do not use their position to further their political career or personal agendas. And I think we talked about that earlier. That's number 17 on the one I got, but I don't have it. I can't write on it. There it is on my computer, number 19 on the computer. So I think that might help kind of cover that if we make sure that we don't include our personal agendas and keep it to the agenda of the college, which includes code of conduct and code of ethics.
Question. I'll direct it to Jen. Okay. So I have a pet that I I try to promote at this college, okay, as far as skilled trades programs. Now, my constituents that I speak to all say, boy, we need to do more all the time. What can we do that's more? And I go, I'm trying. It's it's a difficult challenge because they're costly programs. And it's 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 not necessarily in the missions, not the mission statement, but the strategic plan of the college to kind of up ramp this all of a sudden and make it all happen because we all want it. It might not be there yet. I've watched this try to occur for 27 years, 24 years. It just doesn't happen for some reason. I don't know why. And that's that's my next goal. It can be the money side of it. But so I have my little soapbox I sit on. And I look at that personal agenda phrase. I go, well, that's not really personal. That's that's a common belief within the community that we need to do something about that. So if I fall out of representing representing that common belief that I haven't met any one individual that says, oh, no, we can't do that anymore. And I wish I could because then I would have some validation about that being a personal agenda item. How do I? How do I walk away from that table there? And make it right?
Okay. So I think we need to level set in regards to what's a personal agenda versus what's a part of the board and college's agenda. So first and foremost, it is 100% something that you should be doing if your constituents or others are communicating to you and asking you to bring to the table certain ideas, philosophies, et cetera, across the board, you should bring those to the table. If overall, the college and the board as a one voice decide that that is not a priority nor a, you know, focus for the current month, quarter, year, et cetera, then at that point, if you continue to push it more so from a personal standpoint, not from a raising the issue, not from putting it on the radar standpoint. For example, the easiest, the easiest ones, these are the clear bright line test, right? And then you get into gray. But the clear bright line test is, let's say that in that you would profit from that becoming a goal of the college. That then becomes a personal agenda. Okay?
Most definitely.
It also goes into the conflicts of interest. There's there's a lot, let me have test there. But in the context of whether or not you should be bringing it to the table, absolutely. Whether or not you should continue to push it, continue to disagree upon it, that is where we get into the communication, how the board should be operating and the college as well. So if the college sets, again, again, clear bright lines are much easier, even though they don't really exist on an ongoing basis. But the college says for this year, these are the five things that we're going to focus on and the board agrees on that. And you move forward for the academic year with those five. Then at that point, you should be setting that other item aside until those five have been accomplished. When you go to set the next goal in regards to what should be being pushed forward, that's when you should raise it again, if your constituents are still talking to you about it. But it all comes back to balancing, setting goals, right, prioritizing. You have to take, you have to effectively respect the process in doing that. That would be the idea. And I think that's where, and again, we can continue to talk about and we can identify, like, is something a personal agenda? Is it a political agenda, right? In regards to you guys are elected officials, like, is there a political component there? There's always going to be some overlap. However, we have to identify within each specified situation how far the overlap is allowable effectively, and some are easier to decipher than others. So as they come up, we should be asking those questions in order to identify how much one falls into one bucket.
And I was just going to say, I understand what Mark's saying. And that was also my question. I was the one person to say, how do you put things on the agenda? That was my other thought because sometimes at least I think it's a great idea. You know, I'd like to bring it to your attention and say, it's something that we should put on the agenda. So I'm pleased that we're going to talk about how to do that. And if it's appropriate.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah. And that's just laying out the processes, policies, right? That's why we need to do that in order to allow you guys to operate in the most effective and appropriate way.
No, thank you. Good, good, good. Have a question on conflict of interest. Say, for example, I used to sell widgets and retired from widget selling, oh, two, three years prior to a large widget contract being issued from the college here or from this organization to that company I used to work for, but I I don't have anything to do with them anymore. What would be the, after I found this out, would I make a statement says I didn't know about this, but it happened?
Whenever you are questioning the relevance of a personal relationship, history, employment, et cetera, full disclosure is your best bet. Right? The more you disclose, the more it cannot be considered a conflict of interest. If at any point there is a vote, for example, and you feel that it could be viewed as a conflict of interest, that is the point in time where you withdraw from that vote because it always err on the side of full disclosure and stepping away from it if you believe it can be construed to be a conflict of interest.
Good. Yeah, I used to say, if you have to ask the question, you probably ought to step back.
I have a question. I went to Ag Day, which I really liked, and I went because of my business, but also I went I thought it'd be appropriate to go as a board of trustee. So I went. I know the the former ag department there, he sold our property to us. But there was well, let's see. The West, I think, West Conservancy District there that's representative and they had a booth there and we talked for quite a while, but I talked with my company hat on versus my board of trustee. They're very interested in my company. We grow plants so they could purchase and then resell to other conservations. And I was really excited. We talked back and forth. They emailed me and I have not emailed them back. Because I wanted to ask you and I'm thinking I didn't mean to. Nothing has happened. And so I don't know if I should continue or just say you need to find other people. I didn't mean.
So so when it comes to things like that. So the first and foremost is making it very clear as to what role you are having a conversation in. Secondly, is that if it moves forward and you want to communicate, that to me is a very simple one of having a conversation with the board as a whole and making sure nobody has any concerns about you proceeding in that fashion.
So given given that instance. Okay. And Heidi's very open about it and says, you know, here's where it is. And I've referred three other companies or they found two other companies or what have you. And there is a competitive bid bid situation that comes about. How do you ensure that that blindly gets chosen? Since it's an anomaly what she offers, it was like, you know, there's only how do you? How do you guarantee that there there wasn't a a smudge on the wall?
Well, I am a lawyer, so I won't ever use the word guarantee.
Goodness.
But in but in regards to that type of an item, obviously in that scenario, if it clearly is the area that Heidi has a business in and there and it is a vendor or whatever it is relation to her business, then one, she shouldn't lead that RFP process clearly. She shouldn't be kind of the board of trustee sponsor of that or any of those types of things. That's where it kind of comes down to, right? We are all trusting that you, as the board of trustees, are going to be open and honest with us. And you are going to disclose that information and then you can step away from it. So if in that scenario, if the all the companies that were proposing and being considered, what I, if she had a close relationship with one or all of them, frankly, because she may have done business with all of them at some point, then in that scenario, if it's disclosed, it comes up to the board and it's, if she's questioning it at all, she should remove herself from that decision-making process.
Okay, so now I have a question because this isn't Ames business at all. It just is that she happened to be at an event that was sponsored by Ames and had a conversation with her hat on as businessperson with this outside vendor. So I guess why would? Yeah. So why would we? Why would the board even need to know that? Because it's not Ames business at all?
Yeah, if it has nothing to do with Ames and she's very clear about what hat she's wearing, then I would agree with you. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's it's hard for me to answer that. I don't know specifically what the company is or anything else. So I'm giving you broad, generic. But yes. But that's where like the facts are important, right? Because if it has nothing to do with the college and you're very clear about why you're, why you're having this conversation and
Yeah. I'm speaking to you as I
Because I think we're members of the community. And so we're going to be in those circles where it has nothing to do with the college. Understanding that when we are also attending on behalf of, I think, I think you said it well. Discerning that when I have my aims head on, what I'm doing with that business and what I'm doing with my business.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's the key. You want to make sure whoever you're communicating with knows in what capacity you're communicating with them.
Okay.
I have another example, but we, I think, I think we did this correctly. I'd like to test it. Okay. Because I really didn't have anything to do with either one, but I I, we were looking at a piece of property and this is in my first two years onboarding with the college. And I knew the individual was trying to market and he actually called me and I said, no, you got to talk to Dr. B. Keep me out of this because, you know, it is that and we're, our, our children are very close friends and we've traveled together and done things. But long to short, at that point in time, I think when the board actually went into discussion on that, I I mentioned that and I recused myself from the the actual real estate deal and I'd left the building at that time. Well, two years later, three years later, two years later, I think, we, you know, the, again, the deal came back and and we went ahead and they made the sale. I had no knowledge of the further furthering of that, but we ended up buying that property. Now, at that time, I wasn't asked, because I did recuse myself before, I wasn't asked to recuse again and I didn't then, and I had nothing to do with it. I raised my hand, sort of got it. But long to short, we ended up purchasing the property. And I did vote on that. Now, I didn't feel unethical because I've always made it known. I know, knew this person. But, you know, we didn't have a, an ongoing business relationship or anything like that. It's just, you know, best friends, dads, you know. What would you say about that?
So in a scenario, so again, I'll use a bright line test because those are the easiest to describe. So in that scenario, so if this was your best friend and let's say you were in business together.
My son's best friend. We were not good.
Okay. But let's say you were in business together. So okay, very clear.
No.
Recuse yourself 100%, right? In a scenario where you know somebody, you have a personal relationship with them, that by itself, from my perspective, does not lend itself to a recusal.
Okay.
Okay, you are a part of the community. You are going to know people. You are going to have business interactions with people. I mean, that's part of the reason you're elected to be on this board is because you have those types of relationships. And in some scenarios, the board in this college is going to ask you to utilize those relationships to say, who should we go to? Who should we be looking at? Right? Those types of things. That is all on par. That is what you should be doing. Uh, a recusal and from an ethical standpoint, right, comes back to, is there a component of it that potentially leads to your gain? As well as, for example, let's say it's your best friend. And let's say you have information that is detrimental if the deal went forward, related to utilizing that contractor or that business. Because they're your best friend, let's say you ignore that. And you don't bring that to the table and you continue to push and exert from a control perspective, right? This business or vendor forward. That is a scenario where now we're getting into really gray lines. We're getting into stuff where you could be violating your ethics obligations. And that even though there's not a personal gain, you are principally, most likely doing it because of your personal relationship with that individual. And it's at the detriment of the college and in your role and what you've said you would uphold from a board of trustee perspective. In that scenario, and if you feel that your personal relationship would jade you in regards to that relationship with the college, then in that scenario, you should also recuse yourself. Out, and those again, to me are a little clearer than some of the in-between stuff. But th- those are the types of scenarios where I would tell you, you need to recuse yourself from the vote.
Uh, this is kind of educational. Can I share one more that you and I were involved with Dr. B? It was an employee relationship that there was a termination issue on boarded and the board actually was served. So we became aware of this.
So I'm actually going to stop you there.
But it's, it's just in the past.
But it still has a confidential nature to it that I don't think is appropriate.
Okay. Like I, I, that's, that's fair. But I refuse myself.
Okay. Anything else, anything else on the code of conduct? Anything else on the draft version that you've got in your packet? I assume you've all read it and reviewed it. Um, so I guess we'll go on the premise that if you don't have any questions, any concerns or anything else, we'll go ahead then with the, if we accept a couple of suggestions that Jen made, we'll go ahead with that as a draft. Since we've all had input here, we certainly want Gene to get in on this at some point. But uh, you know, we'll have plenty of opportunity for that. So could we go ahead with, uh, with this as a, as a draft and to, to re, further review then to get this started? Is everybody okay with that?
The only other thing that you and I both talked about at that meeting while was, you know, that, that split between our code of ethics and our code of conduct. And can you have, is, is, can you have too much? Or are they redundant in such a way that you're going, you know, because like Colorado Mountain College has actually a code of ethics, it's, or no, code of conduct. I looked it up. And it's like 11 or 12 paces of information and something you can remember on this many fingers or so, you know, and it seems pretty simple. But it also has some statutory statements behind it for each reason. So they, they kind of did a hybrid between their ethics and, and using statute. I don't know if that would be good for us to review that, not to make a mountain of mole, you know me. Um, but just to keep things simple, because when you get 40 different items of conduct and ethics running around your brain, you gotta say, well, is this the right thing to do? That's the bottom line statement. You know, we gotta say, is this the right thing to do?
Yeah. I mean, yes, you can have redundancy. You get, I mean, this isn't law. You don't have to have a code of conduct. Again, my perspective is a code of conduct is more of a summary document that should pull in some of your other policies and um, you know, standards of conduct that you've already put in place and deciphered to kind of synthesize it down to say, this is how we're going to operate. And that each year we're effectively going to sign off on this and agree to.
Hmm.
Right?
But is ethics and conducts one in the same?
Generally, no. I mean, there are overlap for sure because your ethics and how you decipher your ethics will lead to how you conduct yourself. Right? So one is a little more informative of the other.
Okay.
Um, but there often is viewed that there's overlap because of that, but they're two distinct items.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think they're two distinct things. And as far as having too many, I think as long as each one of it addresses a different topic, they are important topics. So how do you choose which one of those isn't important enough to include anymore? So, um, as soon as you start eliminating, you're going to find an, a, an incident happened where you wish you had that. So I think if somebody thought of it, if somebody thought enough of it to write it down, I think it's probably important that we keep. Personally, I'd rather have too many than too little. I don't know how many policies uh, our, our staff has here, uh, or faculty, but uh, my bet is it's more than 40. So, uh, you know, I think it's, I'm fine with it the way it is. But let's leave it for discussion and we'll be discussing it further. You okay with that at this point? Okay. We have consensus. Okay. Thank you for that discussion. I appreciate it very much. Uh, moving on, uh, item 10, the CEO President's Report, Dr. Bornstein.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. Um, oh, there he is. Dr. Rothimer would like to start us off with some highlights from, um, the Executive Vice President and the Chief Academic Officer Offices. Uh, with a specific highlight on academic program feasibility, review and viability.
Thank you, Dr. Bornstein, Chair Oxiger, members of the board. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity again to represent our teams in talking about the program review and viability, um, program and process that we have, as well as how we look at viability, or excuse me, feasibility of program. So we'll get into that um, towards the end of the um, presentation a bit when we, we, um, when I bring you back a couple hours, um, to the work session. When we were talking about a, a potential new associate um, degree as well. So starting off just with our program review highlights, I, it's my pleasure to report that, uh, a hundred percent of our departments participated in the 2020 program review process. The participation of our faculty teams from around the college provided an opportunity for the sharing of best practices and collaboration on program improvement projects. The 2020 process also saw an increase and we've talked about this a lot and I, I want to make sure I highlight it. In, in increase in the transparency of our data sharing um, by use of our dashboards, um, not only across the college, but as Amy mentioned in our, um, earlier work session meeting and when I was here celebrating Ames being recognized as employee of the year, one of our faculty members shared this with me as well, that it was so nice to have this dashboard information to share with their advisory committees, because before the departments were pulling together information themselves. What this has provided is, um, information that's standardized for all of the departments. And we're trying to make it again easy to use as well as, um, understand and then to use it for continuous improvement. The program review process, as we've talked about, is a continuous improvement to, um, expand the data available to our departments through program review dashboards. And I know you have a couple of examples, um, in your binders and I'll, I'll put up a couple here as well. And we're coming, as I reported in October, when we did this, we had Dashboard 2.0. Um, as we, I mean, you can hear me say a lot, continuously improve. We're looking at Dashboard 3.0. And what I want to highlight, uh, that will be in this new dashboard, um, based on the feedback and requests we've gotten from our faculty and those utilizing this information is demographics on part-time, full-time learners, enrollment by campus and program, as well as our persistence, which is we measure from fall to spring, as well as fall to fall retention. And then also for the first time, and I know you're probably thinking, well, why weren't you measuring that already? Well, there's, um, you know, just chunks of information and we want to make sure we provide, um, you know, what will be, uh, most utilized and, um, needed as we look at this. But for the first time, our CTE programs will be provided with employment projections as part of the program review process. And you saw a, a little bit of that when we talked earlier in the work session about the, um, associate degree in engineering and the, uh, employment projections. So we're looking to spread that data more broadly as we look at our programs. And here are a couple of examples, pulled one from general education, as well as one from a career and technical um, education program. And really what we're trying to do, and as you look at this, again, trying to make the data very easy to get, we provide it to everyone so that no one has to run the reports, creating a systemic process where everyone gets this information. We sit down, review the information and really look at it to see what questions we might have to be able to better serve our students as well as our communities with various programs. So we, we look at a lot of different pieces and based on the questions they ask, we can actually dive deeper into a lot of these different areas. And I know these are, are very basic examples, but they're two examples that come from, again, our general ed area as well as our CT area. That were just some initial, um, immediate things that, um, faculty, when they looked at this, are of things that they could do within their areas. So for example, in history, they just said, you know what? We need to schedule fewer classes. We have a lot of classes with very small enrollment. So if we uh, become more effective and efficient, we can better, um, utilize the resources that are entrusted to us and continue to meet the student needs. And the same, um, as we look across different areas like phlebotomy, looking at, um, offering summer classes and exploring those different needs that are out there. And that's really, again, since we've talked about the, um, program review and viability process numerous times, what I wanted to share with that new Dashboard 3.0 is that we're getting, we're refining the data to make it more usable. And again, making it a systemic process that it doesn't matter who's here. And as we um, change times and roles and things that we know at this time of year, we always get this data. We, uh, put together plans, we identify resources that we need, create action items, um, for continuous improvement. The next part that I wanted to talk to you, and I'm going to go, um, a little bit, not by each of the items on here, but I want to refer you back to, again, as I mentioned, um, our work session and jump down, um, to the uh, to at the, um, one up from, two up from culinary arts, the airframe and power plant and the unmanned aircraft systems. And talk about this one a little bit more in detail and then I can certainly address any other questions about other ones up here. And what I'd like to do is kind of dive into a feasibility piece a little bit. Again, we talked about it at the work session. You had some information in your packets. But a couple of you, and I want to offer special thanks to both Chair Oxiger and Trustee Hout for your participation on March 25th and attending the Ames Flight Training Center when we had a visit from Governor Polis. And really, um, I, I'm going to talk a little bit about that, some timelines and that. And then just share with you some of the things that we're going to need to be doing over the next two months as we really, really dive deep into a feasibility study on whether or not we can, um, engage in those projects. So just to give, for those of you that may not have been familiar with the governor's visit, um, a little bit of that background and then certainly, um, Trustee Oxiger and Hout, if there's things that I've left out that you wanted to share, please, um, jump in and help me out. But one of the, the purpose of the visit was to hear about the Northern Colorado's proposal for the American Rescue Plan Act funding. It's often, um, referred to as ARPA. Again, that's the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And they're creating a proposal for the technology and transportation innovation, um, campus at the Northern Colorado Airport. And a handful of guests that were there, including some of our Ames Flight Training Center. Um, Chair Oxiger was there and introduced folks and, um, you know, the governor and other um, legislative representatives. But they talked about tying the funding of workforce development to the um, economic recovery and the importance of these funds. They shared the overall vision for creating an innovation hub and a new larger airport terminal. And in addition, um, Alex Wernsman, who's our chief flight instructor for Ames, described how Ames could be involved in the project. And it's the two items that are up here, the airframe and power plant, and then the unmanned aircraft systems piece. And I, I'm giving this kind of detail because I think it helps really get a sense of the amount of work and effort and resources that go into really identifying whether or not these are the, the correct path for Ames at this particular time. So the timing of this is that they're looking at the ARPA dates being on May 11th, that the state will announce the group that will oversee the funds and the grant process. And that our proposal will likely come together for a final draft in June, um, and July. And the estimated cost that they're, um, looking at, uh, within the grant. And according to the guidelines, and then if Ames participated with this particular um, initiative, would need to bring, um, approximately 25% of the grant funds, um, to that. And this is looking to be at a, a, a potential $22 million innovation facility and associated, um, equipment costs. So when you look at that piece of it, that's, you know, $5.5 million. And compared to the one that we talked about earlier today in terms of our cost to entry into that program, very different. And, um, and also what that could mean to the area and the partnership. Now, some of the things that you'll see as we, um, research this initiative, um, what, what's included in that grant is the use, uh, potential use of the building, also, um, five, uh, approximately $5 million of equipment. So that would greatly reduce our costs or of entry into this initiative. Again, there's a lot more research into this feasibility process that we need to do that we would, um, if we're, would move forward with it, but certainly bring that back to the college and to the board. And I always, when I talk with the teams and we say, as we're looking at these things, really what's, what's the so what behind this? And what, uh, Eric and Alex from our aviation team mentioned, um, they said, with the ARPA funding, Ames has the opportunity to expand its aviation offerings to its students to create a complete aviation technology ecosystem at a significant cost savings. So it is, um, Trustee Hout, you mentioned earlier with our career and technical, oftentimes the cost of entry and cost of running these programs are significantly more than some of our gen ed and, um, the engineering one that we talked about earlier. So that's all the, um, pieces that we would have to look at and consider. And really, the, um, it, it would really, again, but I mean, that facility is amazing, just like this one, you know, in terms of our Ames Flight Training Center. And what they're trying to do there would make Northern Colorado, in terms of the aviation industry, another spot on the map, maybe not just in the West, but also the country. So our really next step with that is our continued analysis of the feasibility on whether or not of putting our hat in the ring, if you will, for this particular grant. Um, so that's, excuse me, kind of the feasibility aspect for that particular one. I wanted to share that because I know a, a few of you had some specific um, input into, well, um, involvement with it in terms of your participation out at the Ames Flight Training Center. I would say that we, we were honored certainly to host the governor and as always, the Ames teams came together so extremely well and heard such positive remarks from all of the guests that were there, not only in terms of our facilities, but the, the, our people that are engaged in the things that we do. So I, I heard it was um, an amazing opportunity to showcase who we are at Ames and certainly your participation in it, um, helped with that as well. The, um, and I'm not going to stop there before I jump into the other ones. And Chair Oxiger and Trustee Hout, if there's any things you wanted to share from that day, um, or if you had, um, the rest of the.
I just have one question. So you would apply for this grant somewhere between now and the, in June?
Uh, the proposal would be put together between, um, June and July, and that would be the, um, when the application would be submitted.
We might later on decide this isn't right for us right now and not take the monies. Is that correct? Or if, or how is that process work?
So really what, um, what I envisioned and certainly from Dr. Bornstein's guidance was we'd have to put together the feasibility of whether or not we want to, um, do this with, uh, partners. Because there, in order to put this together, they would expect those that have said, yes, we're in, to be in, because if any of those pull out, that's a significant, um, contribution.
But that could take a year or more to kind of figure that.
Yeah, we'll know, yeah, we'll know more on May 11th when that committee is formed and they put together the guidelines for the grant.
Thank you. Right. Makes sense. Oh, the other option is, you know, the goose was kind of, he didn't know, neither did the governor know that Ames Community College has Laramie County for a service district. So he's looking for his, you know, I think earmark money, is that what they call it? And so I don't know if there, you could caulk as Ken Buck and the goose together. That would be an interesting combination. But, uh, But that's a thought.
So a heavy lift for our teams as we go into the next couple of months. So we're excited about it, though.
So I guess I will say something. To the extent that we all are informed about the process at this point, our intention is at the next board meeting in May to have a work session more about this because it is a partnership of four. And the partnership is going to move forward whether we're in or out. And we're going to have to make a decision by July if we're in or out. So what our intention is, is to bring you as up to speed as we are in May. Because if we all need to make a quick decision, we may have to have a special board meeting in June. Doesn't have to be long, but we'll have to decide are we in or out. So we're going to do our best to kind of bring you up to wherever we are so that you're all prepared to make an informed decision. And perhaps it's going to be very quickly. So that's our intention at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Bornstein.
Yeah, Dr. Bornstein, thank you for bringing that up. This is very definitely a partnership thing. And I think that's what the governor is looking at, is who is going to form partnerships and ultimately do the best with whatever his objective is with this money. But he's well aware of the partnerships we, we form up here. And talking with Congressman Nagus, who was all, also there. We talked about the partnerships and talk about the incredible projects that we have completed up here in Northern Colorado. Now, a good example is the I-25 project that's going on right now. It's, it's been going on for so, we started that when I was with the NPO back in the dark ages, it seems like, but that's been going on for so long. But yet it's, this whole Northern Colorado community up here, to include Laramore, Anwell Counties and 13 municipalities. That's what we do with partnerships. And he told me, he says, we're very, very well aware of that. So the feedback I've gotten from the people who were there on the governor's staff said it was a very good meeting and they are very encouraged. So I think that's probably where we ought to look at it coming from anyway, when presented to us.
Okay. And then as you, as I mentioned, as I started this, the feasibility snapshot, this is just a few of the feasibility analysis that our teams have done since or in this fiscal year from July of 21. And what I wanted to just highlight are, you know, those phases that we defined for you last time and mentioned in terms of, you know, the difference between developing, offering items that are on hold, things that we're investigating, research. And one of the other ones I wanted to share with you at the very bottom is the culinary one. I know we talked about it long ago as we were creating this building and kind of that conversation, given the potential facilities and professional kitchens, if we wanted a culinary program. And we did the feasibility study then and came to the board and said, at this time, it, it didn't make sense. We actually had a community member contact us back in February because as we heard during the work session, we have, you know, some of our children that are ready to go. And they said there weren't any other culinary programs around. And so we actually redid that study and came to the same conclusion based on the wages and the cost. It's not a feasible program to run. And based on the wages, you know, the livable wages from it, it just doesn't make sense. So that's why that's on there again, if you were wondering. And are there any specific questions of anything that's up there that I can address for you? Yes?
Dr. Rothmer, the electrician and the plumbing, it's investigating. What's the next phase?
So, and I don't have the updated committees or the steering committee for those who are supposed to meet in March. So just a few weeks ago, and I haven't gotten asked for that update yet. But really, if they look at that as a proposed piece, then we'll look at doing similarly what we did in terms of feasibility of, you know, can we do it? And then bringing it to the board like we did with the digital marketing one that I think you're all familiar with, that's up here that we're in the process of offering. So that's kind of where that one is standing. And from when we gave that update in the work session about the ATTC building and talked about those programs, we were taking those steps with the advisory board to do that, investigating to get more information about those moving forward.
Another quick question on the EMT, Fire Science Nurses Aid on hold. What constitutes being put on hold? Is there, I don't know, I don't understand the process.
So again, thinking of the work session data and that we shared with you about employment statistics and kind of the cost to entry and those pieces. So for the EMT and the fire science in particular at Fort Lepton, one of the challenges as we were exploring those potential offerings is we looked at demand in that area. And initially that demand wasn't evident. And we'll continue looking because we heard that there was some. So we're trying to, you know, make sure we understand really what that market is for those there. In addition, the other challenge, good challenge we have in Fort Lepton is that right now we're space constrained. We have a lot going on there and we have some limited spaces, not only for additional classes, but for equipment. So we were thinking about, you know, like if we needed another fire truck for our program, then if we were able to get that, where do we put it? We don't have a building for it there. So there's a lot of those different variables that put a, you know, an idea on hold. And that's why we keep it on here as an on hold is, as you know, Chuck mentioned during the budget piece, as we look at special projects and the college has wonderfully supported a lot. And you saw the items up there from the mannequins and the simulators and things. We provide that when programs, when we feel that, that they're feasible and we can do that. So it may be that, you know, we come forward in the next couple of years as we're talking about building projects in Fort Lepton, we're talking about these kinds of programs. But we really want to make sure that demand is there first and that we can't meet that demand with our current facilities.
Thank you.
Laramore, in the past, it's, it's been overheard in conversation, a diesel program. Is that, is that, that wouldn't be on this list yet, right?
I think it was previously, and I can look again because I know we've explored it before. And we do some diesel, I know with our auto program.
With the auto side, okay.
And that would conclude my report. If you know further questions.
Doesn't sound like further questions. Thank you, Dr. Rothmer. Sorry, wasn't paying attention there. Mr. Jensen, Vice President for Administrative Services, would like to give a budget update progress report on the Welcome Center. I shouldn't just say Welcome Center, I say all naming and recognition activities and any other highlights. Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein. You have in your packet the budget report as of February 28th, 2022. And a couple of things that I'll quickly highlight. Again, things continue to be on track. Tuition will actually come in stronger than originally budgeted. Right now, we're looking at it being closer to 10 million when it's all said and done. We have a bit of, you know, half of summer is in this fiscal year and half of summer is in next fiscal year. So that's kind of a uniqueness how we record summer. So strong tuition, again, strong with our state appropriations. We'll of course receive all of that as the time through the fiscal year goes through. And again, just always highlighting that our other revenue, the significant increases there that we're seeing is entirely due to the royalty income that we're receiving because of the strength in oil and gas market. On the expenditure side, the only one I wanted to really highlight was travel. And that is because now travel is opening up a little bit and people are actually attending some conferences. So we're starting to see more expenditures in travel this year compared to last fiscal year. So given that, I'll stand for any questions on the February 28th budget report.
Any questions?
I don't see any questions.
No questions.
Thank you. I will go on to a quick update from news from the foundation and our naming and recognition programs. Tours continue. I mean, as we get more and more exposure to the facility, more and more interest is accruing. People are, word is getting out and people are touring the building. So we can, Kelly and her team continue to tour regularly. Several of you, of the board members and community, college people were able to attend the two recognition events we did have for the two naming opportunities that we had with the auditorium and the skyboxes. So thank you for your participation in that. We're up to 134 seats sold. And while we have no new naming and recognition gifts this month, we do have other gifts that the college has received. Atmos Energy has, along with a matching fund from Well Trust, has provided $24,000 to the pantry. And we also just received a endowed scholarship from Berman Lorenson for $20,000 that will endow for, I think, the nursing program here at the college. So just a couple of quick highlights from the foundation. And busy, busy, busy. I'll stand for any other questions.
Any questions for Chuck?
I don't have any questions but a comment. I thought the naming of the auditorium and the naming of the skybox were incredible events. The Millers were there. They were very appreciative of what Ames has done for the community, obviously. And it was nice to meet the McDonald's brothers, father-son brothers, who now have purchased Hurlic Motors, and Scott was here as well. So for them to come into the community and almost immediately start supporting Ames and show that support for Ames Community College was very, very nice to see. And we certainly give them our sincere appreciation. So those were great events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Eric Presswitch, Assistant Vice President for Student Engagement, Inclusion and Success, is volunteered, voluntold to give us the updates from the SACE Division. Thanks, Eric, for doing this. We appreciate it.
No problem. It is, it's an honor to, to be here and attend the board meeting and represent our division. Greetings, board members and Dr. Bornstein. It is great to be here. So I do have a quick thing that I want to share before I get into the actual highlights. So I did, one of my highlights of the month professionally was attending the NASPA conference in Baltimore earlier in March. And it was fantastic to go out and travel again and participate in some professional development. And I had a chance to go out and see our students throughout the conference. I saw them multiple times and I had the chance to go out to dinner with them one night and had a great time. And I was going to get up and joke about how I have a bunch of stories to tell about them after that experience. But I don't. What I will say is how really proud I was of our students and how they conducted themselves at the conference and how seriously they took it. How much, how engaged they were in attending the sessions and how much fun they had. They had a great time. The night that I went out to dinner with them and we went and kind of hit some shops on our way back to the hotel. And I was just so proud of our students. We have multiple traditional age students in SGA and CAP. We have multiple non-traditional or post-traditional students. And then, and then we also have several pre-traditional or concurrent enrollment students. I was surprised. I knew we had some concurrent enrollment students. We actually have several concurrent enrollment students, high school students that are taking classes at Ames that are engaging in student government and CAP. And I don't want to belabor it for too long, but I just, I, I am impressed with them. And I know we spend a lot of time on focusing on educating our students. And for me, when I pay close enough attention, I learn that they're also educating us. And so thank you again, Andrew, and all of our SGA and CAP students for, for the example that they set us and set for us and the energy that they bring to our college. The first thing that I wanted to highlight or mention is commencement. It's a culminating event at our college. It's certainly not just a SACE event at all. It's obviously a college-wide event. It's an institutional event. And, and it also is something that multiple members in the SACE Division help, help to plan. And they, we kind of lead the logistics effort. So the theme this year is the road to success begins with an open door. So that is our theme for commencement. And already we have to date 300 students who have RSVP to participate in commencement, which is a really, really cool deal. We're going to have our own commencement and our own Welcome Center building. And I encourage everybody who's listening in, Shannon's 500 now. Okay, wow. So we have 500 students that have RSVP'd already. So that, and counting. So we'll, we'll have even more. So every time I attend commencement in, at any institution I've worked at, it's so inspiring and so encouraging. And it's an excellent reminder of why we are all here. And so we're all really looking forward to commencement and, and are so grateful for all of the folks across the whole college who are working so hard to make this first commencement in the Welcome Center a success. And we're looking forward to that. The next highlight is a Well Trust grant. So Ames recently applied for and was awarded a $12,000 grant from the Well Trust for our Artis pantry. This amount has been matched by donations from a collaborative total of $24,000 to help support our efforts to fight food insecurity among college students. And so this is, again, just more and more investment into our Artis pantry, which is really exciting to see. We also, I also included some highlights from our transition centers. So our transition center, as you remember, oversees or includes our transfer and career services, our Ames UNC program, and then our Cozy Finish What You Started Grant. And on March 3rd, we had a transfer fair in the student commons that was really well attended. And, and we had an excellent turnout and support from multiple colleges and universities. We had 18 colleges and universities participate in the transfer center. We had over 100 students come and participate in the transfer center. And it was, or sorry, in the, in the transfer fair. And it was really cool to see the student commons alive and active with students participating in that event. Career Services is also, has also implemented Handshake, which is a new career management platform. It's an online platform. It's a student job board that we implemented in, or that we will be implementing in fall 2022. And it will be accessible to all students and alumni. And is widely used by employers and by colleges across Colorado. Ames UNC is still growing. It's grown by 32% since the last year. We now have 148 new students to the program this academic year. So Ames UNC continues to grow. We continue to have students transfer to Ames students or to UNC, which is really exciting. And we're continuing to get more and more participants in the program. So that, that program is still rocking and rolling and really growing strong and growing. Trustee Hout?
Yeah.
Real quick, is there a reverse to that? Are we picking up UNC students in Ames?
We always have students that transfer from UNC to Ames. We always have transfer students to Ames from other four-year colleges too. I don't have the numbers offhand, but yeah, we continually have some students from UNC and other four-year colleges transfer to Ames. And then the last thing that I was going to mention from under current transfer, or sorry, under transfer, transition centers is our Cozy Finish What You Started Program. We have served over 40 students in that program. And we've awarded so far $74,000 in scholarship money since the program started in October. Again, Cozy is a Colorado-funded grant. And it promotes students to re-enroll at Ames and to finish a degree or certificate that they started previously. The last thing I'll mention is that, and this isn't included in the packet, but April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, also known as SAM. And on Wednesday, April 20th, we are actually sponsoring an event called L.A. an event called Love Labyrinth. It's a workshop for any in, any student or employee at the college. And it's a workshop that discusses group, sorry, it's a, it's a workshop that discusses a film that will be showed. And it'll discuss how emotionally abusive behaviors can make someone, how it can make someone feel like they're trapped in a love labyrinth. At the event, there'll be people that attend the event. They will learn strategies for supporting someone who needs help or support those who are making decisions as an involved partner in abusive relationships. So this is a really cool event that I, that I wanted to highlight. It's actually sponsored by multiple departments. It's sponsored by our Title IX Department and our Director of Title IX, Stephanie Lucero. It's also co-sponsored by our care team, our trio department, and our Campus Activities Programming Board. And so it's a really good event. And I thought it would be good for us to just highlight it and help us remember that April is SAM month. And I have a brochure that I wanted to pass out to everybody, just to help raise the level of awareness about how April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And it's always a good thing for us to be aware of and, and be supportive of.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Thank you, Aaron.
Yep.
I'm just going to go ahead and move on as you pass those out. That's okay. So next is the President's Meetings of Note from March. So you'll see that in your packet. Some of the photos there, the Greeley Chamber Annual Dinner was actually from last month, but we have that picture there with Trustees O'Hara and Shock in that picture. So the middle photo there, we had our AFIT CEO reps forum meeting in Nashville. And you may recall, last year and this year, I'm the president of AFIT. And so that was, those were my welcome remarks. And I think Dr. Rothmar caught that picture. I was being very expressive with my hands. I'm not sure what I was saying, but, but there it is. Proof that I was there. And then the last photo on that page, you'll see this is the local women's CEO group that I belong to. So myself, Janine Truswell from United Way, Dr. Pilch, Deidre Pilch, D6 Superintendent, Margot Carston from Bennett Health, Marilyn Shock from UC Health, and Sheri Whit Brown from Habitat Humanity. So those of you who were there, which would be Trustees Hou, Shock, and Wendell, know exactly what hand movement Sheri Whit Brown and myself are doing at the ends. While you'll have to ask me and I'll have to explain it to you. It was a joke from Josh Bloom. And that was at that, that evening, the inaugural evening. So I'll just take a moment to say something. So in meeting him afterwards, and I'm not sure if the three of you had this experience, but he and Jeff, and I forgot Jeff's last name, his opener, were really sincerely touched to be our inaugural event and have contacted our events team almost immediate, their, their manager contacted, almost immediately after, maybe it was the next day or something, just saying what a wonderful experience they had at Ames and when can they come back? So it was, it was really fantastic. So any questions on anything else that's listed there that I could respond to, maybe? Certainly it's not an exhaustive list, but just some idea of what's been going on. The Ames AFIT Summer Institute, what's? Oh, AFIT? That's, that's, yeah, that's actually the Alliance for Innovation and Transformation. That's the national organization that I'm the president of last year and this year. And it truly, it's, it's an organization of 50 higher ed CEOs and their institutions, and it's limited to 50. So it can be small and intimate. Their, their large event in the year is called the Summer Institute. And the primary highlights of that organization is that we actually choose an annual topic that's timely and we learn from one another, from learning partners that we bring in from other sectors besides higher education, which makes it fabulous. Because sometimes we can get pretty insular. You know, we talk to ourselves a lot, but when we can learn from other sectors throughout. So this coming topic, so this year's Summer Institute, it's usually in the summer, so it's going to be in July, is actually happiness and humanity. How we can bring civility kind of back into our lives and also coupling that with, since we're sort of all now post-pandemic or recovery, the future of work. And what does that mean? So we have some fantastic learning, national learning partners that, oh, and he actually has the book, It's Beyond Happiness. The authors of that are also national consultants on a group called Delivering Happiness. To make a long story short, sometimes, actually frequently, the results of our team, Ames team, going to AFIT really impacts our initiatives and sometimes even our topics for our own conversation day and some of our own presenters. So we've really been able to, to bring it back home, if you will. Typically, we bring a team of anywhere between eight and 12 people. Last couple of years, it's been virtual, so we've been able to have up to 40 people. And this year, we have 12 folks heading to Nashville this summer. Momita Roy, that you have heard, is certainly one of them and several others. So. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, next, the employee reports. You have the new positions. And are there supervisors in the audience who have new folks they'd like to introduce? And I see Scott, Dean, Michael. Would you like to stand up? Or head to the podium or?
Podium.
I'm right here. Very happy to introduce two new lab coordinators. These gentlemen work in our natural physical science department. They play a key role in supporting our students and our faculty and making sure that we have the proper supplies and equipment for our science labs. Michael Morgan, who has a bachelor's degree in industry from Colorado State University. And Shania Vinsla, who has a bachelor's degree in microbiology. So two very complementary and valuable skill sets. Very happy to have both of them here and love the aims.
Very pleased to introduce to the board Paul Lind, our new Budget Director and Administrative Process Director. When Kaylee Block moved into the Assistant Vice President Controller role, Paul had been our AP Manager and applied and was selected as our Budget Manager. Paul is an alumni of Ames. And in talking with him, his first experience on Ames began as a toddler at the Early Development Center. So his, his roots go way back with the college. So we're very pleased for Paul to assume that role in the Fiscal Office. So welcome, Paul.
Other supervisor that would like to introduce a new employee? Okay, thank you. That concludes the President's Report. Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bornstein. Appreciate it. Next, comments from board members. Who'd like to start? Marilyn, go ahead, please.
Two quick notes on, just going back to the consent agenda. Just thank you for all your work on the policies. I know they're dry and I know they're, they take a lot of time and work to put together. What I would tell you is you simplified them and they read well. And so actually appreciated being able to go through them instead of an arduous task. So thank you. And my second piece is to Dr. Norwood, Dr. Hanks, James Crandall, and Stuart Thomas. Thank you for your, I'm not sure if they're still here, but thank you for all your years of service and work and really keeping the foundation going for our communities.